Okay, it is Tuesday, sixteen April, five PM. And we'll call this Annual Reorganizational Meeting, Village of North Hudson, to order. Could the clerk take the roll call, please?
Trustees head, absent. Colleen O'Brien-Bergland.
Here.
Paul Rhodey.
Here.
Darryl Standifer.
Here.
President Wecken.
Here.
Trustee Zappa.
Here.
Okay, all president and accounted for. And then the notice has been duly posted. The first, second item on the agenda is oath of office by the village clerk. The way we got this set up, the president will take the oath first and the elected trustees after that.
Raise your right hand if you repeat after me. I, Stan Wecken.
I, Stan Wecken.
Having been elected to the office of village president.
Having been elected to the office of the village president.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay, and then if Paul and Mark and Colleen want to stand up, raise your right hand. Repeat after me, aye, and then state your name.
Aye.
Colleen O'Brien-Bergland.
Having been elected to the office of village trustee.
Having been elected to the office of village trustee.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you, everyone. The third item on the agenda, because of, I have been elected to the president, we have one more term, or one year left on my term, and I would like to nominate George Klein to fill my seat for the remaining year, and I would offer a motion or to approve.
I'll second that motion, if that was a motion.
It wasn't a motion. I'll get better at the motions as we go on here. This is, first day is gonna be.
Mr. President, I move that nominations be closed and the board cast unanimous ballot for Mr. Klein.
Second that.
Second that. And any discussion that's said, George, would you join us and take the oath of office, please?
Thank you. Delighted to stand.
Raise your right hand if you have to me.
I, George Klein.
I, George Klein.
Having been appointed to the office of village trustee.
Having been appointed to the village trustee.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will.
Support.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge.
The duties of said office.
Duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
Thank you. If you'd like me to put this. This is leftover from years ago.
Fiscally responsible, that's good. That's good. Okay, welcome aboard, George, and thank you for agreeing to fill this spot. And I know your counsel will be invaluable to me, so I appreciate you accepting that. Item number four, standing committee assignments, recommendations and approval requested. Standing committee assignments are the committees that the board members sit on. We are required by code to have each member on two committees. And do I need to read these, or have all the board members seen these committee assignments? And if I could have a motion to approve as recommended, that would be.
Mr. President, I move approval of the standing committee assignments as indicated on the directory of elected and appointed officials.
Second that.
Thank you, Gerald. Thank you, Mark. All in favor, I don't think we need a roll call for this, all in favor, signify with saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Next item on the agenda, appointed officials, committees, boards, commissions and representatives to other bodies, recommendations and approval requested. If I could have a motion, a second, to approve the appointed committees as you have before you, we could discuss after such motion.
Then I'll move to approve the standing committee assignments, recommendations, as indicated on our sheets here.
Thank you, Mark. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, George. Discussion, I assume there may be some?
Yes, I'm concerned about the nomination of Kurt Leese for the library board. Given his vocal disapproval of the library and funding, I don't feel that he would be a good representative to the board for North Hudson. I know that the library does have some financial difficulties, but I feel that somebody who is a little bit more in favor of the public library would be a better candidate for, to represent North Hudson.
Any other comments? Because, I don't know, I did this a little different than has been done in the past, I guess. I, as I was making the appointments, the word, you know, maybe a lot of times this board, the committee assignments are made and no one is made aware who is on the committee until after we posted and it is published. I would like to thank everyone for being here. I know that most of the folks that are here are here for this reason. I've been a neighbor, Kurt's been a neighbor of mine, because I was, I moved to the village first, I've, you know, been here since nineteen eighty-four. Kurt moved in in nineteen ninety-three, has been my neighbor, and I've, for twenty years, and I have known him, and he's always been an outstanding, you know, he's been a very vocal, you know, proponent of some issues and opponent of other issues. I invited Kurt to come to this meeting if any of the trustees, you know, because there has been a lot of emails, phone calls, I've learned a lot in this first week, it's my job. And I would like to, if there is board members that have questions for Kurt, I would like to have him, he could take the podium and answer any questions you might have as to his qualifications for this position. I, I do believe he would be a good representative. I'm a, you know, this is, there is a lot of budget issues the village has, and we are constrained by limits from the state, and I know that's, it's a big issue. I'm not, I'm not, I'm a fan of the library, but I also want to have somebody that's there that can keep the board apprised of what is going on in the library board so that we can make, you know, good decisions regarding, you know, possible funding options. So if the board would like, I can, you know, Kurt is here, if there will be questions, we can have him take the podium.
Yeah, I have a question, or two for Kurt.
Do you want to go out there?
Yeah, you should give him.
There if you'd like.
Please, so that, a microphone, and I know your voice will carry, but.
Is there any on?
I believe so.
Is it not an inquisition or a trial or anything like that?
Sure, that's fine.
My familiarity with you begins and ends with the couple of times you came to a village board meeting, and given the current circumstances, I'd like to have you reassure me if you understand what your role is as an appointed representative from North Hudson on the library board.
Sure. I represent, I serve at the pleasure of the village president and the board, and I represent the views of the majority of the board and the president. The views that I've gotten from the village president is that he is not looking to raise taxes on the village residents for the library to stay in the current facility. That's what I understand, that's a viewpoint. I'm a supporter of the library, I'm not sure what Ms. Colleen O'Brien-Bergland meant by, as an opponent of the library, I mean, I, the library's a great asset to the community.
I'm not sure if, I, I, well, this might be a good time to clear some things up in general. I thought an appointment was to represent what someone thought the views of the people of North Hudson might think. I never viewed you as an emissary of the board, per se, with a direction.
I'm appointed by the village board, the president, I mean.
With, has there been some direction towards anything?
I think that the village president, Mr. Wecken, has given me his view on taxation, and that he's not looking to raise taxes on the residents of North Hudson. You can correct me, Stan, if I'm wrong.
Well, I clarify, I mean, that is, that's a partial, I mean, a portion of it. I think, my main reason for appointing you is to be able, for you to keep us informed as, you know, I mean, that's what any of the committees, members, and there's a long list of the committees. I expect to be informed of what these, you know, I can't attend all the meetings as none of us can, and I'm hoping that you will keep us informed what.
See, I'd be, my view, Kurt, if you will, is your role as appointed to the library board is to help the library board in whatever their mission is or function is, in what, and the parameters of that, not, and usually in these cases, personal politics should be left at the doorstep and understand what committee you're working with and the institution you're working with. The financial decisions will be made by the respective boards that the library board ultimately has to go to. I guess I'm a little uncomfortable if you're already predisposed to be making decisions on our behalf financially, and that's what I seem to have heard there.
I'm not making those financial decisions.
Nobody.
You're making those decisions, Mark.
Okay, but in other words, I'm asking that if you're going down there open-minded, representing North Hudson in, at the library board without any predisposition towards any real direction.
Well, I think that the people that currently serve there, don't they have direction from the people who appoint them? Don't they, isn't there some direction, you know, that then when they go there, they?
Well, I've never been president here, and I've never appointed anybody, and I don't, I can't say that if there's been an appointment and somebody's appointed for a particular reason with a certain direction, or a principle in mind, the direction might be reporting back to us monthly, I'm not talking about something like that.
Sure. Oh, sure. I may be more happy to do that.
What I'm looking for in any appointment is that somebody represents us in good faith and without embarrassment and acts well with the committee and understands the role is, whatever, the goal is, the accomplishment, whatever that group is trying to get done, and work within the confines of that. And then after that, the other processes take, take hold and the financial implications and all that, that eventually gets to the boards of each member community. Now, in an endeavor down at the library board, if there is the discussion how to spend some money or something, and that, within their budget, and you reflect some conservatism is there, I don't care, I'm just saying, I'd be a little bit concerned if there was, if you were directed to behave a certain way, I guess, other than with being open-minded and looking at what's the best interest of the library.
I'm absolutely looking out for the best interest of the library. I mean, really, right now, I'm somewhat disappointed that, you know, that the move was made to the, to the new library, and then knowing the people that made the move, knowing full well that they would be running a deficit, right from the start, we've been unable to purchase the amount of books that we'd like to purchase, the hours are, have been curtailed, and all of this has been as a result of moving to a facility that we really can't afford, which is, I mean, there are some decisions that are gonna have to be made. As far as acting on behalf of the village without embarrassment, I mean, really, I've lived here for twenty years, I have been outspoken at school board meetings, I've been outspoken in the paper, but, you know, I will put my record of integrity against anyone, I mean, I, I mean, I don't know what you meant by serving without embarrassment.
No, what, it just, well, I, wrong choice of words. My only interaction with you has been, you've been at a couple of these board meetings, and there's been no cause or concern on my part.
And there shouldn't be.
No, there isn't.
Right.
I don't know you personally, and I haven't seen you in, in any of the action that's been communicated to me via several emails. So I'm impartial that way.
That's fine.
And I never judge anybody unless I know them first, never. I don't take secondhand information, ever.
And I appreciate that, because I, because I do have a record of volunteerism in this community that I would, I would share with you, but I don't think I really need to.
No, you don't, you don't need to at this point.
Yeah.
This is not an inquisition.
Yeah.
But there are a couple of questions I wanted to ask.
Sure.
I think if nothing else, for the benefit of the people here.
Sure.
That's all. And the ironic thing is, you know, the library should be the home of ideas, right?
Mm-hmm, and diversity.
And I don't think we're burning books yet, so I'm, hopefully, we don't have to burn an appointee either, but.
I hope not.
I, for the life of me, I can't see what threat an appointment can be to a library board if what they're conducting is right and good. My work with committees here, I've been doing this twenty years, I've seen people come and go, some people with an axe to grind, they think it's a certain way, they realize it isn't, they either, they do two things, they resign quietly or they hang around for sometimes way too long, as in the case of Mr. Klein, so.
Yeah, I'll say this much, Mark, I serve at the pleasure of the village president, and I'm not, I would not go into this, I'm assuming this is maybe a three-year appointment, I'm not sure what the appointment is.
Three.
But I would say that at any time, and I'll say this publicly, at any time, that I do something that is an embarrassment to the board, or I'm acting out of turn with, with the wishes of the board and the president, you can call me at any time and I will step down. I have no problems with that.
Like I said, that was perhaps the wrong word, but just a certain amount of decorum that's appropriate with any committee function. Frankly, from what I've seen through the years here, anytime we can get anybody involved who has some passion or has some interest in thing, in anything, is a benefit. We have a hard take this year, we had two trustees running for three spots, we had a president running unelected.
Unopposed.
Unopposed, I should say, well, he was elected.
Yeah, I got enough votes.
So, you know, I'm trying to make a positive out of this, and it's, if you can, if you can corral Kurt's passion about things, I think he could be a big help rather than a deterrent, and at the end of the day, I think it would be way less fair or reasonable for me to decline his participation, and I don't think it reflects well on us as open-minded people, hopefully, which we all are, and we have assurances that Kurt will be, to decline his appointment to the library. I have no political axe to grind with anybody or any direction toward the library with this, this is just a resident who wants to serve on that board, and I think it behooves us not to, or to let him do it and give everybody a chance, you know? Not to get on too big a soapbox, but this whole country is based on giving people chances, so that's where I feel about it.
Thank you, Mark. Anybody, George, or, I mean, George, or Darryl, or Paul?
Mark kind of summed it up.
Thank you.
Mr. President, as you're aware, there have been a substantial number of people that have expressed concern about this appointment and perhaps some others. I also observe on the representatives to other bodies that we are proposing to appoint a person, I see that it's yourself, so you're looking for not too much work to do, but the Central St. Croix County Waste Water Committee has not met for a number of years and is unlikely ever to meet again. That seems pretty apparent that we ought to consider simply withdrawing from that because it's a dysfunctional and non-meeting body.
Which?
For those, it's the one, Stan, that's.
Is that the one with all the initials?
CSCCRWPC.
Yeah, well, George.
It's just of no purpose. So, Mr. President, my observation is that because of a substantial number of people expressing concerns and asking, in effect, us to take a deep breath and verify that the appointments are in fact the appropriate ones, Mr. President, I move to amend the motion that's on the table in front of us. I direct your attention, so you can follow my intent, to page four, the directory that's in front of us.
Yes, sir.
Mr. President, I move to amend the motion by removing that portion on page four of the directory, including and all of the language following the heading "Representatives to Other Bodies," so it would be the final two-thirds of that page, and postponing action on the inclusive "Other Bodies" section until the next regular meeting of the village board of trustees, to allow the village president to consider possible alternatives.
Second.
There's been a motion and second, roll call on this, or do we just? Any further discussion on, on the amendment to, I guess, postpone any appointees from the representative to other bodies?
It's simply that section you write, Stan, from representatives on, just that section is all.
Well.
If I can comment before we vote, the, that CSCCRWPC, the one you were.
Central St. Croix County Waste Water.
I'll bet you should be so proud that you know what that acronym, what those letters are. This topic comes up virtually every year, and every year we want to remove it, and yet it stays. Gloria actually gave me a reason for that several years ago, and I think it had something to do with, if it ever does come back, then we would need a motion to bring it back. Gloria, you remember something like that, to that effect?
I do not remember the details on that, I'm sorry, it's been several.
But George, the reason for the formation of the group has disappeared. It was the considering the wastewater in Central St. Croix County and the movement of the.
Oh, I see, I see where you're going.
Water south, and, I mean, the issue's gone away.
All right.
I'd be happy not to be on another one of these.
Well, it's a committee that never meets, so.
Right. Well, which would be a good one for me, too, that'd have been fine, you know?
And I think the reason it said. And the last time we actually met was when the school was built, passed the ball track, that's the last time that we were in touch. And I think that he has to be on it and you have to be on it. I don't think that there's a choice, that that's why the village president's on it. It was, when it was valid or active.
So the county has disbanded?
No, we haven't got anything to do with it.
I have no problem getting rid of that, I don't, I'm not polished in the parliamentary procedures yet, and.
Darryl, you're asking to postpone this whole section?
The intent of my amendment to the action item that's on the table is to postpone consideration of this section, which is representatives to other bodies, to allow the village president additional time to consider whether or not there ought to be any alternatives, and to bring this for our consideration at the next regularly scheduled board of trustees.
Well, I, I believe you're making this motion in order to hold up one appointment, which would be the library board, and I have received as many as, you know, I'm sure everybody here has sent me an email or a call, I've seen many of those, and I believe that, as Kurt has stated, and I will state that if Kurt does not represent the village of North Hudson, we do not have an agenda. I tried to explain that my purpose is so that I have, Kurt's a numbers guy, I mean, everybody knows that, I mean, he follows budgets, and I take that very seriously, and the reason that I appointed him was that I want somebody that is a budget guy, I want somebody that will watch the spending, I want, I know he will have ideas to, you know, to, you know, alternative ideas, that's the one thing in a, in a group, if everybody's on the same side or page, we, and, you know, they have the same ideas. I believe Kurt will bring the diversity, or add to the diversity of that board, and hopefully come up with some ideas in order to make the library budget work where they don't run in a deficit, that is my purpose. It, you know, I, like I said, I've lived and talked to Kurt for twenty years, and I believe he is a man of integrity, although very passionate, and I believe that he will represent the village well. The rest of the question on this, I mean, it's, if we're gonna, we've never had a discussion, you know, as long as I've been on the board or heard of, of any other, you know, to postpone this to another meeting, I see no reason, so. If we, if there is any other discussion or from the rest of the board, take a vote on the motion. From, from Darryl to amend the nominations to postpone it to the next term. All in favor of Darryl's motion?
You're saying, Stan, that you'll be, even with time, you'll be staying with Kurt?
With time, exactly, with, I stand.
All right, I just wanted to.
Yes, that's what I tried, I don't do a real good job explaining.
That's all right.
I knew, you know, so.
Mr. President, may I request a roll call vote for this one? This is for the amendment.
The amendment.
Roll call vote for the amendment, yes you may, George, or I guess, do we need a second for the roll call vote? Roll call vote. George, since you made the amendment, please.
No.
Yes.
No.
No.
Yes.
No.
Okay, so, that would be for two against the amendment. So the next item would be then to vote on the committees as they stand or as recommended for the appointed officials, committees, boards, commissions, representatives to bodies, recommendations and approval requested, I make that motion to.
No, that motion's already on the table.
It's on the table.
It's already on the table, okay.
We would like to say something else regarding, everybody's talking about money, and I think Kurt will be excellent at monitoring the budget that is set forth by the library. As far as the amount of money that the board allocates to the library, that's fixed, you don't have anything to do about that. I was reminded once again that the increase, the requested increase amounted to a dollar sixty-nine cents or the cup of coffee, but I also have to talk about that. I also have to talk about that. That's not how these numbers are calculated, and they're actually set by a very complex formula, and it is not up to us to be able to allocate more money when we are fixed by the state on the amount of money that we are allowed to collect from our taxpayers. It's that simple, and I refuse to be supportive of firing another officer, another police officer, to increase the funding of the library. If the library needs more money, it is up to the library to generate that money from gifts, from foundations, from grants, not from the taxpayers who are relying on us, the trustees. They put their trust in us to monitor the money. We can't take any more from the taxpayer, be, first of all. Second of all, it had been suggested to me once, we'll take it from another department. Which department would you like me to take it from? We've already squeezed Lincoln's beard off the penny. There's nothing left. That's all I got to say about that, Stan.
Thank you, George. So, the motion in second is on the table. We will take a roll call vote on this. Paul, would you like to start the motion to accept the nominations as stated on the sheets?
I approve.
Thank you. Darrell, thank you. Yes?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Motion is approved, five one. Thank you, everyone, and hopefully, I pray that we don't have issues that will be contentious, and it's not my goal to do that, and, you know, the first week of this has been a start, a tough start. Kurt, thank you so much for being here. I know you've got your-
My little brother's coming.
Your little brother, yeah, I know, you're part of the Big Brothers deal, so.
So I'll see you though.
Thank you. Save me a cookie.
Yep, we're making cookies too, yes.
Okay, uh, you know, Board of Review assignments and meetings and times is set for item number six.
I think our clerk has an update on that.
Melissa?
Yep. For the tax assessor, there is a tentative Board of Review meeting, hopefully scheduled for Tuesday, June 11th, from five to seven o'clock PM, and the open book is tentatively scheduled for Friday, May 31st, from four to six PM. Will no more the first week in May.
Okay, thank you very much, Melissa. Uh, the initial Board of View is to be held 30 days after the second Monday, so when we get those items, uh, set, it will be posted. Okay, nothing here for that. Item number seven, Resolution 2013-03 Designating of Public Depositories, Recommendation and Approval Requested. This is a list of, uh, local banks that we, when we do have funds, this is where we put them. Uh, they're, uh, the resolution states the Board of Trustees of the Village of North Hudson, Wisconsin, at a meeting held this 16th day of April, hereby adopts the following resolution, be it resolved that in compliance with Section 34.05 of the Wisconsin statutes, the following are designated as a public depositories for public monies of the Village of North Hudson. And I won't give the addresses, but First American Bank in Hudson, Eagle Valley Bank, Wells Fargo of Hudson, First National Community Bank, Associated Bank, N A U S Bank, Bank Mutual, Citizens State Bank, Central Bank, and Local Government Investment Pooled Funds. Uh, with all those banks, you'd think we had a boatload of money and we could take care of a lot of different things, but I think with the presence, the way the government's laid out, we have to have them spread out in different places so we're insured in case there is an issue. Be it further resolved that the treasurer and all public officials of the Village of North Hudson, Wisconsin shall hereafter deposit public monies of the Village of North Hudson in one or more of the foregoing public depositories as from time to time hereafter determined by resolution of the Board of Trustees of the Village of North Hudson dated this 16th day of April 2013. I believe we have-
Mr. President, move approval of Resolution Number 2015-03.
Thank you. Darrell, thank you. Mark, I'm sorry I'm getting long-winded, I'm trying not to do that. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
President.
Roll call? Okay, sorry. Uh, George?
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Okay, motion approved unanimously, thank you.
Stan, can I move to approve Resolution Number 2013, Resolution Identifying Line of Succession for Proclaiming an Emergency or Disaster in the Village of North Hudson? There's a lot of verbiage here that's boilerplate.
Second.
Thank you, Mark and Darrell.
I would like to note that I moved up to number two finally.
There you go, Mark.
Yeah, I moved up several spots.
Long enough, anything happens.
Yeah.
Yeah, but look how far I've fallen.
Paul, we'll get you up off that bottom there, you know, that's what you started out as a new member.
Always have.
Okay. All in favor, or is there any discussion, I guess? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Resolution.
Roll call.
Oh, okay, resolution. Uh, Paul, you want to start us out, roll call vote, sorry?
Aye.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, that's, it's through eight. President's comments are item number nine. Uh, I, I took, you know, I ran for this reluctantly, as I'm not retired and I know it, it requires a lot of work. I've learned an awful lot in one week of being sworn in as the president. I expect I will learn, and, and I promise you, I will learn and do this job to the best of my ability. I read quite a bit, and I read a lot of the founders, and Thomas Jefferson, our third president, in eighteen, in his 1801 inaugural address, said the following, and I believe this, and I'm going to try to follow, one of our greatest presidents. He stated, "Enlightened by a benign religion professed in deed and practice in various forms, yet all of them inculcating honesty, truth, temperance, gratitude, and the love of man, acknowledging and adoring and overruling providence, which by all its dispensations proves that it delights in the happiness of man here and his greater happiness hereafter. With all these blessings, what more is necessary to make us a happy and prosperous people? Still, one thing more, fellow citizens, a wise and frugal government, which shall restrain men from injuring one another, shall leave them otherwise free to regulate their own pursuits of industry and improvement, and shall not take from the mouth of labor the bread that it has earned. I believe in a wise and frugal government, and I promise the citizens of North Hudson that I will work to that end, and I hope that the citizens give us a chance. We've disagreed on things to start with, and, and I hope, look forward to working with those, and I will try to have the most, as transparent and honest government as I can possibly show you." Next item on the agenda is administrators' comments.
I'd just like to welcome Paul to the board, and Stan, look forward to working with you as the new village president.
Thank you, Gloria, and I look forward to working with the staff and this, the new board as well. On item 11 is the clerk's comments. Anything, Melissa?
Um, I'd just like to welcome everybody as well, and I do have a question on item number six, eight. Do we need to approve the, the Board of Review members?
Ooh.
The Board of Review members are approved in the document that was approved by the board as a whole.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Board of Views is second, the outside on page two. And, thank you.
Good question.
Good question, and I guess, you know, I gotta read closer, and I promise I will get better at this as, as I go along, I hope, and with the Lord's help. Uh, let's see, item number 12 is, uh, do we adjourn? Motion to adjourn, thank you, Mark. Thank you, George.
Aye.
This, this meeting is adjourned. Uh, thank you all for attending. Thank you all for attending.